If I could have your attention, please. We'd like to welcome you to our city council meeting. It's January the 12th, 2023. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is getting the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. Please silence all electronic devices. With that, I call this council meeting to order. Could we all please stand together for the invocation? I'd like to welcome Pastor Alden Whiteman from the Amazing Grace Baptist Church to lead our invocation, after which if you'll please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, it's a joy to be able to come before you, asking your help, your wisdom, your guidance upon the needs of this city. Thank you, our Father, that you've given men and women the call to be servants for the needs and the help of the citizens, as we recognize that the city is not made up of rules and regulations, but of people. Intercede, your Father, as we're growing so quickly. There are great, great strains upon the city and the government and the needs. Intercede for our law enforcement, encourage them, watch over and protect them for fire and rescue for their needs. I pray tonight for this council, you grant them wisdom and guidance. Bless this city, bless their needs. Intercede for us, our Father, to you as you carry for us. We ask your intercession in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Blackwall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Matheny.
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Ms. Miller, do we have any agenda updates?
No, sir.
Thank you. At this time, we have two presentations. I'll come forward for that.
Mr. Dethridge from our building department has a presentation for the employee of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for coming tonight. It is my honor and pleasure to introduce Mrs. Leanne Tomiano as our employee of the year for the year 2002. When Leanne was hired as our floodplain manager, she was tasked with improving the city's community rating system ranking, and we were optimistic and hoping for an improvement from a seven to a six, which would have meant a 15% savings on flood insurance for our residents. Through her untiring efforts, Leanne was able to exceed expectations and improve our rating from a seven to a five, which is a big deal. That's a 25% savings on flood insurance premiums for our residents. To put this number into perspective, only 16% of the participating municipalities and cities achieve a five or better. So it's a major thing. Leanne is also a member of our spirit squad and is always working to improve employee morale by helping to create innovative programs and fostering a positive workplace. For these and many, many more reasons, Leanne has been nominated as our employee of the year for 2022. Thank you.
Well, I know that this is a really big privilege, big shoes to fill, and I'm just really honored to be in this role and excited to be the city's new floodplain manager, and we will keep this going and keep the savings going. Thanks, everyone.
Rose between the thorns.
Congratulations, Leanne.
At this time, we have a presentation, a team presentation, team recognition of the month by Chief Gurke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call attention to Ms. Kimberly Mateo and Ms. Amanda Lopez, if you'd come up here, please. So ladies and gentlemen, as you know, the police department is staffed with incredible men and women that serve our amazing community every day. You've heard the term "it takes a village." Well, it definitely takes a village to run the police department. One such area is our records department. As you can imagine, the police department maintains tens, if not hundreds, of thousands of records. Our record staff does an outstanding job maintaining these records daily, which is why we are here this evening. Kimberly Mateo and Amanda Lopez work as our police records clerks. They both possess a vast amount of experience and are extremely knowledgeable. Collectively, they have trained several new employees for records and administrative and assistant. They recently identified the need and value of a structured training program to address the daily tasks that have evolved with the growth of our organization and numerous technological advancements. Kimberly and Amanda voluntarily reviewed the training program and credited, excuse me, created a procedure for each aspect of the position's responsibilities. The procedure manual with photos and screenshots, that's things that I need, is photos and screenshots, provided detailed steps for completing some of the most difficult tasks in our records division. Creating this manual and enhancing the training program was above and beyond their role and responsibility. Their attention to detail and the effort placed on creating a comprehensive manual have been influential in our new employees' learning and ability to perform the job duties. Neither Kimberly nor Amanda were asked to be trainers, but there was a need. We recently had two new records clerks begin with the department, and Kimberly and Amanda stepped forward to be the trainers. This responsibility added to their existing workload, and they received no additional compensation for the extra work that they performed. However, both Kimberly and Amanda had the best interest of the agency's success and that of our new employees. This program has been so successful that other law enforcement agencies have contacted us to review the process so they can utilize and adapt these for their own departments. I'm so proud of both of them for their loyalty, dedication, and commitment to our wonderful city, and I'm happy to recognize them for their efforts.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This is my routine.
Gotta take some screenshots of this so we know how to do it next time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any person who desires to comment on an item not in this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to sign a signing form to be provided with the residing officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, and we will ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Would anyone like to speak to the council during the citizens forum? If not, we'll move on to our next item. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they will have the same opportunity. I believe our city manager would like to pull an item, I think.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to pull item A for discussion.
Are there any other items from the council? If there are none, then we will go to item number A on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Currently, Section 2, Paragraph A of the agreement, on page two, states that Toho, at its sole cost and expense, agrees to design, permit, construct, install, own, operate, maintain, and repair an Upper Florida aquifer water supply well, its related facilities and upertenances. Supply well as generally depicted within the project area, which is the well site. We would like, after discussion, we would like to add the following sentence to the end of Section 2, Paragraph A. Should Toho desire to decommission and abandon the supply well, Toho will remove all equipment above land surface and will abandon the well in accordance with Florida law at its sole cost and expense. They have seen this language and agreed to it.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Dan, do we need to vote on this item now? We just...
If everybody's in agreement with the language, you can just vote on the entire consent agenda with that language added to item A.
Are there any objections to that language being added to this resolution? Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. This language came up from my agenda review, just because I said, what if in the future they, you know, remove it? There's no language in here that says, you know, they're responsible. I guess it points back to the original ILA, but I was like, belt and suspenders, can we put it in agreement? Because I know how it goes in the future. I deal with it all the time, contracts, and it's like, well, it doesn't say, it's not clear, let's split the cost, right? So Toho was gracious enough to add this language. I did want to add a little bit more detail to it to say, and restore the area, if you're okay with that, so.
Are there any objections to that being added? And restore the area? If there are no objections, and there's no other comment on the rest of the agenda, do I have a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda?
So, ma'am.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Fletcher, Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Urban.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwall.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
That brings us to public hearings. The next portion of tonight's meeting, our public hearings, brings us to item number one. Madam Clerk, will you please read that into the minutes?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-58, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the city of St. Cloud approximately 101.97 acres, identified as Lakeside at Satilla, located south of Haywood-Ruffin Road, east of Narcusi Road, and north of Lilian Lee Road in accordance with the voluntary annexation provision of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes.
If it's the pleasure, Dag Marie Segarra, planning manager, if it's the pleasure of the board, if we can hear items one, two, and three together?
Is if you'll read items two and three also?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-59, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation, LDR, low-density residential, to approximately 101.97 acres, identified as Lakeside at Satilla, located south of Haywood-Ruffin, east of Narcusi Road, and north of Lilian Lee, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the planning commission, recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, subraibility, copies on file, and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2022-60, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of PUD, planned unit development compatible with a low-density residential future land use designation change adopted by ordinance number 2022-59, for approximately 101.197 acres, identified as Lakeside at Satilla, located south of Haywood-Ruffin, east of Narcusi Road, and north of Lilian Lee, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, providing for approval and preliminary master plan, filing of the planning commission, recommendation and proof of publication, subraibility, and effective date.
Thank you. Good evening again, Dag Marie Segarra, planning manager. Tonight is, in front of you is the final hearing for the annexation complaint amendment and zoning amendment to the prop, to the Lakeside at Satilla. This item was heard on first hearing by this board in October 27 of 2022. The property is located south of Haywood, Haywood and Ruffin Road and east of Narcusi Road. The applicant is seeking approval of the annexation, the comprehensive plan, and the CMA, which is going to be a PUD. Staff is recommending approval. The Lakeside at Satilla, this is the preliminary master plan. The PUD process has three processes integrated. The first process is the preliminary master plan, which is pretty much presenting the concepts of the subdivision in the plan. Then it goes to the final master plan, which is when they provide a little bit more details of the, of what they are proposing, and then they go to the preliminary subdivision plan, I mean, sorry, subdivision construction plan, which it gets approval, the engineering and planning as a final. So this is the first stage. The final master plan will come to this board when the applicant is ready to, and submit for that final master plan. So this, what we're seeing tonight is the, kind of like the conceptual ideas of how the subdivision is going to look like. The city council, sorry, I lost my train of thought. The city council recommended approval in October for the first reading and transmittal of the comprehensive plan, and is staff recommendation for approval for the annexation. It means all the requirements for the annexation. During that meeting in October, comments were added by the board in regards to the transportation. Last year, we had a couple of proposals in this area, and it was the staff worked with some of the applicants to work in a global TIA of the area, and this condition was added into this master plan, and the applicant agreed to the, to this condition. And this condition will remain throughout the process of this master plan. This is the second part of that same condition indicating that all the improvements will be required at the time, at the process of the preliminary and subdivision construction plan. It is the request from the city staff that we recommend, that the city council approve the annexation ordinance number 2022-58, the comprehensive plan and member ordinance 2022-59, and the PUD zoning plan amendment for the preliminary master plan, ordinance number 2022-60. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is here to answer any questions and also be available to answer any questions you may have.
We'll recognize the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Happy New Year, and congratulations to two new commissioners or councilmembers. My name is John Adams of RJ Wyden and Associates, 316 Church Street, Kissimmee. We are the planners for the project. We are in agreement with staff's recommendation, and I am available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. If you'll stand by. We'll receive public comment at this time. Chrissy, you got me last time on this. If you'll pronounce your last name for us, please.
How many times I've been up here? It's Malukowitz.
Malukowitz.
Chrissy Malukowitz. I'm at 1820 Puffin Road, St. Cloud, Florida. Thank you for having me, and I'm not opposed to growth. However, what we are experiencing here today is growth at an exponential rate. Residential housing is being approved and built at such a fast pace that our roads and schools can't keep up. Because of this, the quality of life is being eroded in our area. On countless occasions, longtime residents have stood before both the planning council and city council to voice their concerns, and nothing is done to correct the problems. I reviewed the preliminary concept of Lakeside at Satilla, and based on the current concept, I'm requesting the following special conditions. Minimum square footage of homes to be 1,800 square feet and to add in pullout parking spots versus on-street parking. Pullouts to be implemented throughout the entire community, not just a portion of the community. As I understand it, the traffic study will determine if a light is needed at the intersection of Lilian Lee and Narcusi Road. As a resident of Lilian Lee and Puffin Road, I will tell you that in order to save lives, we will need a light implemented. Today, without a light, it's difficult to safely make a left onto Narcusi Road from Lilian Lee. The lot sizes currently are at 34-foot and 50-foot frontage. Presented are some of the smallest lots I've ever seen. Home buyers are looking for something different, not the same postage-sized lot. We are asking the developer to compromise and add in a mixture of larger lots, which would include 60-foot or 75-foot frontages. This would stand out as a differentiating factor amongst other developments in the area and would also cater to the high-end buyer as well as all income levels. Giving these options also adds to the desirability of the development. There is not one new-build community in our area that are offering larger lots. During the planning and zoning meeting, John Adams said the rendition of the proposed homes would mirror the same quality as Turtle Creek. These renditions are far below the standard of Turtle Creek. The community is looking for something unique, not the same one-size-fits-all house where you can't differentiate one house from another. I have photos reflecting the quality of homes we are requesting to compare to the renditions of the homes the developer is proposing, which I will submit to you. In summary, again, I'm not against this community development. I'm simply asking the city council to take my requests into consideration as a special condition and to be implemented into the approval of the final master plan. May I approach to give you my handout?
Give them to the clerk over there. Clerk over there. Thank you, Ms. Malukowitz. Betty Damke.
Hello, everyone, and Happy New Year. Here we go again. First of all, I am in, my name Betty Damke, 4776 Head and Heights Trail, St. Cloud. I am in total agreeance with what Chrissy just presented to you. We've done a lot of research on this, and we believe that the requests that we're asking are reasonable. But before we go into that, a few years ago, St. Cloud was recognized as a unique, small town with a positive future for growth, both residential as well as commercial. Today, St. Cloud has become nothing more than a carbon copy of any town anywhere. The reasons for this are very simple. Failure to encourage regionality, compatibility, and consideration for impact to existing residents, the lack of variety catering to developers with rubber stamp approvals, and the list goes on. Charter schools are thriving due to the overcapacity in our classrooms of public schools. Traffic is out of control. Osceola County is rated the most dangerous county in Florida in which to drive. That was on the news the other night. I encourage you to go forward with the following and institute for all agendas, all approvals, both this one and in the future, the following conditions. Special conditions be included with all motions that are made for approval, not just discussed and ignored. Encourage planned concepts offering more variety of lot sizes and styles. Do as you did with this one and combine TIA studies with other developments that are proposed for that region, that area, and how they will combined affect the traffic. Develop a new system, other than the developer, to monitor developments under construction to ensure that the developer is following the approved plan and stipulations as set forth in their approval. An example of this is what the Starline residents are facing now with Center Lake. Refrain from mitigating wetlands to other areas. Retain the natural flow and accumulation of water in its natural location. Mitigating some of these have resulted in the flooding we've seen during the past storms. Codes, future land use, comprehensive plan, et cetera, they are constantly being altered and changed. And simply because the code might be legal does not mandate that that's the right thing to do. Quite frankly, the codes existing today are outdated and need to be revised. Once again, I agree with everything that Chrissy proposed and hope you will vote accordingly.
Thank you, Ms. Damke. Would anyone else like to speak to these items? Not? Mr. Adams, if you'd like to respond?
Once again, for the record, John Adams, RJ Wyden Associates, 316 Church Street, Kissimmee. I understand the concern about growth, but I do want to point out this property is currently in Osceola County and has a low-density residential land use. That low-density residential land use is three to eight dwelling units per acre. We're proposing with a little less than four, or half the density in the city that we're proposing tonight. Talk about variety of product. We're proposing a variety of product. We have a minimum 1,500-square-foot product. Prices are going to start, sales prices are going to start in mid-to-high 300s and go well over a half a million dollars. The size of lots does not affect the price of homes as much as the home itself, the quality of the build, and the community amenities. We have a large central park on this plan. We have regional trails that are all part of the Narcusi community plan. We have extended those trails to allow for some walkability out to the north and Narcusi Road and connecting to that network. We have exceeded minimum code requirements, and those community amenities is what is going to maintain value of this community. We have no wetlands, so we're not impacting any wetlands. And as far as a light on Lilian Lee, if a traffic light is demanded by the TIA, that's a county road. Both Narcusi and Lilian Lee are county roads. That'll be reviewed. We agreed to cooperate with the other development and have a holistic TIA study. What you're looking at tonight is just a very, is a preliminary plan, as Dag Marie said. We've got a final plan coming up. As those details come in, we'll incorporate them into the plan. Be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. We'll have discussion or motion or question by council at this time. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Gilbert?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. Did the developer meet, exceed all the requirements and requests made from the 1022 meeting?
Yeah, I mean, based on the feedback that we had from council and the recommendation of the traffic study, there wasn't much of discussion about the product types or the lot sizes at that meeting. The concern, the comments were more gears, the transportation, and the condition was created and was adopted into the m- created and was adopted into the motion.
Thank you. Councilman Fletcher?
This question is actually for Mr. Adams. So I'd like to see some more landscaping requirements around this project by the time it comes back for final master plan. What I personally would be looking for would be a 20-foot landscape buffer around the property with more dense vegetation and mature trees at planting. That's really what I'm looking for. And then also possibly a wall and vegetation around the lift station that's on Lillian Lee. That can come back at final master plan for us to care about.
Yes, sir. With the final master plan, you actually require landscaping plans. We will bring in a landscaping plan with the final master plan that exceeds your code requirements, and you'll have the opportunity to review it.
Anything else? Ms. Miller, your light is on. Do you have a question?
I forgot to turn it off. I'm sorry.
No problem. Councilman Urban?
Yes, thank you. I think Councilmember Fletcher's recommendations are very good. I would agree with that. And also, at the last meeting, we had a different council member, Trace, who was asking for maybe larger lots or something on the perimeter areas. Is that possible for the final master plan?
I'll have to discuss that with my client. We'll take a look at it. Again, though, size of lots is one of the least relevant issues to the actual price of the product and the value of the community. It's the community amenities that—yeah, I could give you the example of Celebration. I mean, there are million-dollar homes on 50-foot lots. They've got a golf course. They've got other social entertainment areas, civic areas, you know, the downtown. And that's the whole notion behind this urban growth boundary that Osceola County adopted to create those spaces, create those place types. The county did adopt and you accepted it, the Narcoussi community plan with the regional trails that we've recognized. That all increases values. Quite frankly, if our neighbors want to bring 406 people that want one-acre lots, my client will build it, but they can't sell three of them, or five of them, or 10 of them. This product meets, in the overall scheme, the intent of the urban growth boundary, although it's only half the density of the urban growth boundary allowed by the county. But I will have that discussion with my client and we'll see what we can do at the final.
Okay, thank you. And just for the record, I did meet with the applicant just to get some more details on this. I—again, it keeps going back to what staff said and what the applicant said here. It's already zoned for eight units per acre in the county. The city is four units per acre, and that's what this is being proposed here. So I feel like a lot of times the city doesn't have a choice. If we don't approve it, it's going to be built anyways in the county at a higher density. So those are just my thoughts on it.
We have another discussion from council. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. I also met with the applicant and we discussed just the general nature of the project. But I would recommend to my new council members, if you want something, make it in the motion because our conversation doesn't count. So that always comes back where people say, you know, something was mentioned in a meeting, but it doesn't make it in the motion.
I had a—another question. So on your—I want to confirm that there's no townhomes?
No townhomes.
Okay.
It's all detached product.
Okay.
And there's no apartments either, just in case.
Do we have another discussion? Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 2022-58? We have a motion from Councilmember Urban. Do I have a second? I mean, Gilbert, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Can we include the conditions?
On the annexation—this is the annexation.
Okay. Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Brings us to the second item, ordinance number 2022-59. Could I entertain a motion for the adoption?
And Mr. Fletcher, if you are—if you want to address conditions related to landscape, it actually would be best done on the third item.
I'd like to make a motion for the adoption of item number 2022-59. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Brings us to ordinance number 2022-60. What was the pleasure of the council?
I'd like to make a motion for approval, adding special conditions that a 20-foot landscape buffer be included in the final master plan and the landscape buffer to include mature, dense vegetation at planting, a wall and landscape buffer around the proposed lift station on Lillian Lee with also mature and dense vegetation at planting, and would like the applicant to include a visual representation of what type of plants, trees, are proposed at the final master plan.
Are you—want to speak to that?
Yeah, I just want to bring up one thing for you.
Well, hang on a second, if we could.
Let me—
Can we get a second?
Let me get the motion. We have the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Sorry.
We have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher and a second from Councilmember Urban. Now, would we probably let him speak to that? Would you like to speak to that now?
Good evening. Sean Hindle, Hansel Walter Associates, 8 Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida. I'm not representing this item, but under the Narcoussi overlay, walls are not permitted use in the Narcoussi overlay. They do allow for split rail fences, but there's a conflict between the overlay ordinance in your Land Development Code and your Land Development Code. So we can do the dense landscaping. In 20 feet, we could do a berm, but that's—for me, berms, I don't like because of the intense water that you need to landscape—to maintain landscaping on a berm. But we could do the landscaping, but if you put the wall and now we're in conflict with your code and in conflict with the Narcoussi overlay. So I'm just trying to maintain that Narcoussi overlay.
I thought Mr. Fletcher's—you're condition was based for the wall simply around the lift station.
Just around the lift station.
That is correct.
I think that—I believe that will not be inconsistent with what you're talking about, Sean.
Okay. And just so you know, the lift stations will be designed with the final master plan, so we'll—in the TWA just changed the codes, so we may have two lift stations, but we'll check that design. And I don't have a problem with that. Most likely, we're going to move the lift station more internal instead of on the way in.
Okay. Mr. Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Councilman Fletcher, I don't have a problem or an issue with buffering and screening. Instead of, though, getting down into the weeds with specifics, we can agree to exceed your landscape ordinance, and you will have the opportunity to review that on the final plan. I would much rather deal with that so that we have an opportunity with our experts to deal with issues like Sean Hindle, the engineer, just brought up, and work with your staff. And we understand what your intent is, and we will present something to you that exceeds your code with the final. And if it's not acceptable at that time, we can negotiate and evaluate specifics.
We—I—I could see where you're coming from, but we're dealing with some issues right now where stuff wasn't included early on, so I'd like to clear it up now before we get that far.
Would you accept amend—perhaps amending your motion to allow for a more generic exceeding the code?
No.
No? Well, that's what we would request.
And you have a motion and a second, Mr. Mayor?
I think our legal counsel may want to address that as well.
I'll let her do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joe Thacker, 17, South Orlando Avenue, Kissimmee. I want to make sure I understand the motion because when we bring the final back, I want it to be consistent with what you're seeking. So the 20-foot buffer along Lillian Lee and Nora Tyson, is that what you're talking about?
I was asking for around—all the way around. Haywood Ruffin, all around the east side.
Okay, that—that's a concern with what the—with the plan itself. They're fine with the 20-foot around Lillian Lee and Nora Tyson, but when you get into the other portions of it, that 20-foot specification, it will be problematic.
On the north side.
On the north side, Nora Tyson and Lillian Lee, yes.
Why would that be problematic?
I will let them answer that question. What they're doing right now, they're back there with the plan, trying to measure, and that's—they're back there very—and that's one of the reasons Mr. Adams said, let's take some time to get that final master plan and bring it to you and discuss it with you before it comes back, because they're back there saying, okay, we can do the 20-foot buffer here, we can here if we slide this. So it's really hard to do it on the fly back there. And so that's—that's what they're back there trying to do.
If you would accept on the north and west property lines a 15-foot, we can commit to that. If we can exceed that with our final, we will.
Say it one more time?
We have a 15-foot buffer around the entire property with a 20-foot buffer on Lillian Lee and a 20-foot buffer on Nora Tyson.
Okay.
That's what we have right now. If we can exceed that with final design, which is more of an engineering plan—I'm just a planner, okay? But it's more of an engineering plan. If we can exceed that, we'll present that with the final. But right now, we can only commit to 15-foot on our north and west property line, 20-foot on our road frontages for Lillian Lee and Nora Tyson.
Ms. Thacker?
Thank you. On the west side, there will be—it's rolling right now. There will be a PD coming behind it. That buffer may be problematic as you put the two PDs together. And so we'd like—we'd like to be able to look at that and address that in the final master plan that comes back before you on the west side.
With—the—the west side, I'm not as concerned because I like the interconnectivity that you guys have provided.
Right.
I get that. On the—I would still like to see it on the northern side.
Yes.
And then wrapping around Nora Tyson and Lillian Lee.
And they're fine with that.
I would be okay with that.
Okay.
Because of the interconnectivity.
Thank you.
So—
I'm not sure.
What are we agreeing to here, Mr. Rupert?
Well, if I—if I could—
What are you agreeing to?
Maybe we could address it as a suggestion. Mr. Fletcher's motion was very well said and pretty specific. So, however, given, I think, what you're hearing is there might be a need to adjust this at the—and when it comes back for you as the final master plan, based on what they look at. So maybe your motion, Mr. Fletcher, I would suggest that the base—essentially, the base motions stay in place. However, we add a condition on it that that could be modified by the City Council at the final master plan stage.
I'm fine with that.
And only the City Council can modify that.
I'm fine with that.
We can accept that.
This way, at least, you can—at the final master plan, you'd see the dimensions and you'd see what real practical problems are out there. And if there are any real unavoidable prohibitions in doing this, you'll at least be able to see them.
And staff can't revise it in the future without coming back to you.
I agree with that.
So do we have that clear?
It's up to the council. I think that's how—we can add that to your your motion.
Yes.
And again, so what we're basically saying is that those conditions that you just put into your motion would stay in place, however, they could be modified by the City Council only at the final master plan stage.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion from council? We have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher, a second from Councilmember Urban with the conditions that were discussed. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read item number four.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2023-02, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, closing, vacating, and abandoning the platted right-of-way located south of Betsy Ross Lane and Neptune Road, specifically described in the body of this ordinance, providing for separability, conflicts, and effective date.
Good evening. Good evening, councilmembers. Erin Stark, Transportation Manager. The case before you tonight is the Neptune Elementary Parent Loop Vacation of Right-of-Way. This is the second vacation of right-of-way that some of you have seen associated with the Neptune Elementary property. The case number is ABN 2200008, ordinance 202302. The applicant is proposing to vacate .22 acres of platted right-of-way. The site is south of Betsy Ross Lane and south of Neptune Road. The area that they wish to vacate is east of their property, where the curve on Betsy Ross Lane is, and I'll show a graphic next, and it's between this property and the Anthem Park plot. And this is the location of it. The bend of the road is just north of this. We have reviewed this and followed statutory provisions and the provisions in our code. No objections were received from utility providers or any city staff or departments. This proposal for vacation meets the strategic plan goals of infrastructure and growth management. And there's a little extra information that we wanted to disclose to you that will come forward at the second public hearing for this case. During the review of the proposed vacation of right-of-way, we noticed on the survey and in review of the proposed site plan that they have also subsequently in review, they— we noticed that the road of Betsy Ross Lane that's out there constructed today in the utilized right-of-way just north of the area proposed for vacation was not actually located within the right-of-way, and it was just west of that. And maybe historically, over time, no one has noticed those details, but we asked for that land area that the road is within to be dedicated to the city and not on school board property, and they're satisfied with that as well. We also asked for the dedication of a sidewalk easement just west of the road. There are other development proposals in the area currently under review, and we think that sidewalk connectivity is important in the future. So we've asked for the dedication of the area of right-of-way that contains the road. It's .704 acres, and we've asked for the sidewalk easement of .215 acres. These—it's very hard to tell because it's kind of zoomed out, but it's west of the existing So we're asking for your approval with conditions of ordinance 202302 with the following conditions: that the area that contains Betsy Ross Lane shall be dedicated as future right-of-way and the area of—for a future sidewalk connection shall be dedicated as a public sidewalk easement. We've reviewed these conditions with the school board staff. They've prepared sketches of descriptions of those areas, and they'll be prepared to bring those documents forward for signature and acceptance at the next public hearing. I'm available if you have any questions.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council. Councilmember Fletcher, like, it's been on that long time. Councilmember Matheny?
All I would like to say is, yes!
We're getting there.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second one from Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
And Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
And Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
The next portion of tonight's meeting is the council action. Madam Clerk, will you please read item number one?
Resolution number 2023-005R. a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, authorizing the city manager to execute the Florida Department of Transportation Resolution 03-BSD06-09-01 and the deed for parcel number 100 relating to the U.S. 192 pedestrian improvements at the intersections of Michigan Avenue, Indiana Avenue, and Florida Avenue, and providing an effective date.
Good evening. Kevin Felblinger, Public Works Director. The reason why we're bringing this forward is the DOT is proposing to put in two new pedestrian lights at the intersection of Indiana Avenue and Florida Avenue. They're also looking at doing improvements at Michigan Avenue to be able to make it more friendly to pedestrians. They, like I said, they are making improvements, like I said, to signage, pedestrian signals, and pedestrian crossings. The good part about this is Florida Avenue is an area where we are putting a bike trail in. And so, this will allow for residents to be able to go, to be able to pass from the south side of 192 to the north side. The reason why I brought this forward, we just wanted to make everybody aware that this is coming forward. And then, there is a little bit of a difference with these layouts. This is called a Z pattern. Instead of having the traditional parallel crossings, they actually will require people to be able to cross diagonally across the roadway there. So, I just kind of just put in, the plan started to kind of give an overview of what the intersections will look like. Like I said, the areas, the two areas I have up there are from Florida Avenue. Unfortunately, like I said, the score through there, like I said, is, you know, the speed limit is 40 miles an hour with a lot of traffic. So, it is very unsafe for pedestrians to be able to cross where there are not lighted intersections. And so, this will allow for a safer passage for pedestrians to cross the road. With that, that was the end of my presentation. Does anybody have any questions or like any further explanation about this project?
Thank you. If you'll stand by. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So, I'm sure we all remember, we've had some really bad fatal accidents, and we even had our crossing guard struck off of 192. And so, this is an unusual design for me as well, but it's not our facility. It's FDOT's facility, and this is what they feel like, based on their experts, you know, that this is the way they want to do it. But Mr. Felblinger was crafty and got them to agree to revisit it in, what, 18 months?
Twelve to 18 months.
Twelve to 18 months, so that if it's not working, they've agreed to come back and revisit it. I don't really think there's much more that we could hope to ask for on someone else's facility, so I, great job on that. I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Kevin, thanks. The studies, this is new to me, too. The Z, is it a safer path? It must seem to be, if they're doing what. What's the history behind this?
They're, they're talking about it, it's more efficient for them to be able to do that. It also allows for them to have two push buttons instead of four push buttons. Like I said, so there's a little bit less that is going into it. Like I said, it's usually in a little more, in areas where there's a little less knowledge of the area, a little more touristy. But like I said, but it does allow for to, their claim is it makes it a little more efficient for to be able to pass pedestrians through the intersection by trying to keep them in one area as opposed to trying to keep track of two different sides of the road for people that are going through there with vehicles.
Thank, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, and a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
And Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Mr. Mizares?
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Miller?
I have a few items. First, I'd like to say that we had a great New Year's event downtown. We estimate that approximately 5,500 people attended throughout the event. Our downtown shuttle is scheduled to end at the end of this month. Our Pink Heels event is January 21st, and we will have you, our city council, on our team plus staff, ready to win, so we'll see you all January 21st. The City Hall building addition continues. We're excited as we're seeing the progress. We reviewed the proposed use of the space and therefore need to reallocate the funds from the Building Department and move 27.54% of the total project cost, or $1,018,980, from the Building Department to prior year funds. The federal lobbyist was able to secure $1,051,360 for our Hopkins Park and River Road restoration, revitalization project. So, we're excited that Toho Water is going to be working on that for us. It was a project that we started prior to the transition, but they will finish it for us. And as you know, public safety is of paramount importance in our community, as it is across the state and nation. And it goes without saying that central Florida has experienced an explosive growth in population. This coupled with firefighters finishing their careers and retiring has created an extremely tight and competitive market for fire departments across the region to attract new firefighters to their agencies. Recognizing the situation at the city, Mr. Sturgeon created a public-private partnership with First Response Training Group. Their owner and president, Jay Marquez, is here in the audience. And together through the partnership, I'm proud to announce that the St. Cloud Fire Rescue Training Academy has received certification from the State of Florida Fire Marshal as a fire training center. This certification will allow our partnership with First Response to train new firefighters, not only for our department, but will help those in the region facing shortages. And to make sure I didn't forget to bring this up, they brought the plaque so that the city council can see this will be posted at the fire training center. So, we appreciate you.
Congratulations. Good work. Do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher?
I just had a couple of things. I'm excited to see that the road project downtown is moving along. One of the things that I did see was you guys did, the mayor did a video that was put out, I believe, back at the end of December with Positively Osseo. That was amazing, by the way. I think it would be great if we could start maybe planning some type of marketing plan for when the road is all reopened and, and maybe like a big grand opening event type, type thing, something like that. And then, also, I was speaking with a business owner in downtown who had some interest in pedicabs, so I wanted to see if the board was interested in something, you know, to direct staff to go and take a look at that. If it's something that maybe we would like to see with, you know, connecting the lakefront to downtown with Florida Avenue, all of that. I didn't know where anybody stood on that. Something like that.
Yeah, I did, I spoke to probably the same business owner, and I, I know he expressed some interest in pedicabs, and I actually spoke with city manager Miller about it earlier today. I would definitely be interested in exploring that, that option for downtown. I think it would be a good addition if it can be, can be done right, and if the city attorney maybe has some options for us to go down that direction.
If the council's direction is to move forward, we would have to do some revision to the city code, but it certainly is doable. Many municipalities have them, and we certainly can work to find something that works for the city, if that's a direction. You're not approving anything, you're just putting-
Yeah, just bring back some ideas.
It's going to require a code change.
That's all I was asking. I think we're in agreement for that, if you could bring back some evaluations of how that would work, what it would cost, et cetera, how it would work, the challenges.
Would you like us to meet with each of you to understand kind of your thoughts on how we could draft something and then come back with a potential for that? Because I think the concept is specifically one specific person's vision. So, I don't know how I come back with different ideas. We can evaluate their vision and look at how we would incorporate a code change to do that.
Well, I think the first thing, the first things, what most of these have is the ones, the code ordinance at its place basically deal with how the, how the vehicles are operated, the safety proof issues related to them, the insurance related to them, and the geographical area about where they're allowed. Those are pretty much where the standard code provisions have. The second piece to that becomes, how does the city want to procure whoever's going to be the quote-unquote vendor that's permitted to use the city streets, essentially for a for-profit venture? So, the first part is probably a little bit more succinct and tight because there's only several, there's only so many restrictions you can put in place, and we can definitely give you an ordinance in place. The second part might be more of what Mrs. Miller is talking about, that we're going to require some input from the city council.
Councilmember Matheny?
I would definitely like to engage the police chief as well because dating a police officer, I hear about like the enforcement issues of, you know, the wild, wild west of pedicabs and Uber drivers and just the whole nine yards, so I definitely would want to engage him in the conversation.
Really no different than golf carts running around, except it's a bicycle. My thing is, is I would just like to explore the option because there's nothing on the books for it now. So, the, the business owner is taking the step to come and ask and do the right thing and talk to council members and, and all this stuff before just operating, you know, kind of like down the way.
Well, he wouldn't be able to operate, right?
He would not be able to operate in any manner that essentially operates a business. Obviously, if someone wants to buy what looks like a pedicab and just drive it around as a regular bicycle, we can't stop someone from doing that. But if they're going to operate a business in the area, then they're not authorized to do so under the current city code.
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't want a wild, wild west in St. Cloud, but-
Most of the, and my suggestion, too, is let us put something together, draft it. You can see what it looks like. If you like it, you think it's a good idea, then we can tweak it. And then Veronica can get with you on the second piece of that, which is how this is going to be implemented.
Maybe something similar to the golf cart ordinance or something like that.
It's, it's a little different because the, the, the one distinction is there are some restrictions related to golf cart operation that are in the Florida statutes. There are none with regard to pedicabs. So, that's part of the distinction of them. So, so we really, they treat them more like bicycles, and which is what they are, so, yeah.
Okay.
But we can bring some back, clearly.
Just bring some ideas.
Okay.
Acceptable. You have anything else?
That's it.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes, I know we're opening up the roads in Pennsylvania Avenue and things such as that. I had the opportunity to walk Pennsylvania Avenue, and there were some safety issues that the, that the city manager addressed immediately with their staff, which I thought was phenomenal. But I would like to see what we can do as we continue to open, to be proactive and do some kind of safety walkthrough as these sections are opening again, as not to have our citizens have injuries or any cars or things such as that. As, as, as you know, when I was walking through, I stepped on a brick and I went six inches into the ground. That's, we put a cone over it. I talked to the city manager. She did a great job. They got it fixed. But I really like us to be proactive as these streets start opening, to have some kind of safety protocol to investigate or at least walk through the streets and see that they're, they're good. Now, I know they're settling, coming down. I know that. But I really think it could be a safety issue if we're pushing, 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 open, and then somebody gets injured and hurts, and then we're sitting with the liability. I don't know exactly how to do that, but I'd volunteer myself to do the walkthrough. But I think it needs, we need to have some kind of safety issues with the openings of the streets.
I think we can handle, I think we can handle that. I do want to point out, we did have our big New Year's Eve event with lots of people walking around, and no one stepped on that one spot.
I was digging around trees. I was going through easements. I have to admit, I, I was a little overboard when I saw some things missing. I actually went further. It was by the, the, one of the signs that we had put, the temporary signs for parking. It was in that area, and it was right by one of the drain ditches that it just went underneath and just crumbled, so. But again, middle of the street. I'm glad nobody got injured. I guess 5,000 people were there that night. Wonderful event. I just look at it as, as a business owner's standpoint, a safety issue and liability issue, that's what I was trying to bring up.
We can do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Urban?
Yes, thank you. I agree with Councilmember Gilbert. I walked Pennsylvania Avenue with our public works director today, and they, they have already repaired certain spots that I had some concerns with. But I do have concerns about, I know the business owners are very eager to get it back open, but I don't want the contractor to compromise quality in order to rush to get it open. I just want to make sure that, that it's being done right, and it's going to be, I think we need to make sure that our investment is protected here in the city for years and years to come. And on that note, too, I spoke a little bit with the city manager today about hopefully we can get some kind of maintenance contract or maintenance program on these bricks so that, so that we can make sure that they're, they're in good shape for all the cars that are going to be driving over it, and, and we don't have too much of a bumpy road like we see on, on New York right now. So, those are my thoughts on that.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. New Year's Eve was great. I'll echo everybody's sentiments. I wanted to ask you real quick, on the Hopkins grant that we got, does that include like the impact fees for the residents connecting to the sewer?
I can only tell you that I know that it includes connecting to one house and moving a lift station at the park facility, and I honestly don't know the rest.
Oh, can you just provide to council, you don't have to do it now, but just provide to council like the, the project details again?
Yes.
I'm sure we got it at one point, but just wanted to see that. I wanted to bring up something kind of relates into what we're talking about, maybe the city could look into. So, I also walked Pennsylvania Avenue, and, you know, it's, it's ongoing construction, so there's going to be items and issues, you know, all the way to the finish line. But the county is talking about extending maintenance periods to two years. Because typical construction contracts, you have a one-year warranty, but the county's talking about extending it to two, and I think that's a great idea if there was a way we could try to look into transitioning into that. Because, for example, we had that development off Inova Road, and then we had the road issues, but we, you know, we'd already like released the road, so maybe, you know, moving forward, we'd get a longer maintenance period, if that's something we could look into.
Absolutely could be part of the scope of the contracts.
Yeah. And then, my last comment really is about the soccer fields and the ball fields. So, I know when we did the soccer fields, Hanson Walter offered to do the design pro bono for us. So, I just kind of wanted to see where we were with that, and if there was anything we could do to expedite. Unfortunately, Mr. Hendel left. The other thing is the ball fields, and I know that when we brought this up and approved it to move forward through design, council all supported in urgency with getting that done, and maybe we could get it done before the next baseball season. I think we're three seasons in now. So, also, if we could kind of shine some energy on those projects, just to try to keep them moving with those. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you. I also would like to thank all of the staff for the incredible job they did with the New Year's event. A lot of work went into that, and thank you so much. People had a great time. I was in a OUC, in our local committee meeting today, and was made aware that OUC has had to pass another price increase this January to cover the increased costs of fuel, gas, and coal. They estimate that it'll be about a $13 per month increase for those who use 1,000 kilowatts, which is about the average. And so, just wanted to make our citizens aware that that is something they certainly do not want to do, but they seem to not have any choice, have to pay for the incredible increase that has been added to gas and coal. Remind all of you about the joint-use facility is proceeding very well, and they're putting in a lot of work there, and it's coming on very nicely. We have a cold weather forecast for this weekend, and the First United Methodist Church will be providing cold weather shelter Saturday evening, starting at 8:00 p.m. Their location is at 1,000 Ohio Avenue. Lynx will be providing free rides for anyone who needs transportation. The shelter there at First United Methodist Church will provide a hot meal as well as a warm and a safe place to sleep. If you need that or you know of someone who does, they can take advantage of that. I'd like to also make you aware that the Arbor Day Foundation has congratulated St. Cloud, the city, on earning a recognition as a 2022 Tree City USA for making the planning and the care of trees a priority with our city, which they believe, and I agree, does enhance our city, and it causes our residents to be able to enjoy a better quality of life. enhance our city and it causes our residents to be able to enjoy better quality of life for generations to come. With that, it brings us to our information section, report section. Monday, January 16th, city offices will be closed in observance of Martin Luther King Day. Thursday, January 19th, city council strategic workshop will take place at 3:00 p.m. at The Ranch. Friday and Saturday, January 20 and 21, the Institute for Elected Officials will be held at St. Augustine. Thursday, January 26th, the city council meeting normally scheduled for that night has been canceled. Thursday, February 9th, city council meeting will be held at 6:30 p.m. here at city hall and council chambers. Available for your review is warrant list number three. With that, we have no other items.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I forgot, I had one thing to report to you.
Go right ahead.
As you all recall, the city was involved in litigation related to the old Hickory project, which was the '84 Townhome Project. The applicant in that project has dismissed the lawsuit, so that lawsuit is now concluded and will not be moving forward. I just wanted to make you aware.
Thank you for that information.
Thank you.
With that, we have nothing else on our agenda. We will be adjourned.